McCoy.
Here.
Brownell.
Here.
Conley.
Here.
Van Ors.
Here.
Hopkins Smith.
Here. Axon means previous meeting.
Move it.
Second. Roll call.
McCoy.
Yes.
Brownell.
Yes.
Conley.
Yes.
Van Ors.
Yes.
Hopkins Smith.
Yes. Any special claims?
None.
Action of bill is submitted by the county auditor, roll call.
McCoy.
Yes.
Brownell.
Yes.
Conley.
Yes.
Van Ors.
Yes.
Hopkins Smith.
Yes. And we have proclamation this morning. Supervisor Brownell is going to read today's proclamation.
Thanks, Tom. Proclamation for Dr. Martin Luther King Day. Whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. is known for a man of great principle and advocated peaceful social change throughout his life, and his legacy continues to inspire millions of people worldwide, and whereas Dr. King was instrumental in strengthening the belief that a person's worth should not be measured by the color of his skin, by the content of his character. Encourage you Americans to honor all persons, look beyond their differences, and come together for the good of all. And whereas without great progress, although great progress has been made, more work remains to be done to fully eliminate prejudice and injustice throughout our country and to meet Dr. King's challenge to work unceasingly to uplift the nation and we love to a higher destiny, to a higher plateau of compassion, to a more noble expression of humanness. And whereas to commemorate the life and legacy of Dr. King, on November 2nd, 1983, the US House of Representatives passed a bill to declare Martin Luther King Day Jr., Martin Luther King Jr. Day as a federal holiday to be observed annually on the 3rd Monday of January to represent Dr. King's birthday. And whereas Polk County recognizes and honors the contributions made by Dr. King and pledges to promote universal respect and observance of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day and still rights guaranteed to all residents throughout Polk County and our nation. Now therefore be resolved that we, the Polk County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim Monday, May, January 16th as Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day.
Thanks, Bob. Okay. Going to jump to number five, a public hearing, Becky.
Number five, resolution approving Polk County 2050 Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map Amendment from Agriculture Classification to Neighborhood Commercial Classification for 5251 Northeast 94th Avenue in Bondurant.
Is proof publication on file?
Yes.
Is anyone here to speak? Anyone here to speak for or against? Okay. Please come up the podium, state your name and address.
Good morning. I'm Teresa Colson. I work at, live at 8592 Northeast 56th Street. So I'm a mile by crow's fly from the Geisler's Farm, the property that is being looked at. I'm here to voice my opposition to the spot rezoning for the agricultural to the neighborhood commercial mixed-use zoning of the Geisler Farm for commercial use for office and event space. As stated by Bernard Barak, whom served as an advisor for the US Presidents, including Woodrow Wilson and Franklin Roosevelt, agriculture is the greatest and fundamentally the most important of our industries. We all flourish or decline with the farmer. This continues to be true today. We need to preserve the sustainable land used for the agricultural activities. We need to protect from the threat of the urban sprawl in the agricultural areas. We need to promote agricultural activities as previously done with a conditional use permit for the agribusiness and teach the world the importance of feeding each other. The proposal is not currently supported by the 2050 Comprehensive Plan. The existing future use land map is classified as agricultural. Neighborhood commercial use to mixed-use zoning becomes a slippery slope. Infrastructure support may be needed for additional septic, water, and the traffic studies to support this proposal as stated by the Polk County Zoning Commission Assessment from November of 2022. Yet I caution, the current contract buyer is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization and therefore is exempt from property taxes that support the cost of infrastructure support. In the mix zoning is granted, then other businesses could be asking for rezoning as we continue down the slippery slope. The spot rezoning is not in character with the surrounding area. We need to encourage commercial development in areas that support commercial use infrastructure. We should not be leapfrogging to the areas that require infrastructure development that currently are not within the 2050 Comprehensive Plan and Future Use Land Map of Polk County. Multiple factors must be considered. One factor is the surrounding neighborhood response. Initially, 12 neighbors were notified. We were not one of them. At the Polk County Zoning Commission meeting on November 28th, 2022, it was noted that 12 letters were sent out and they received two letters of support and zero in opposition. Only two neighbors were present at that meeting. At the neighborhood meeting on December 17th, hosted by the proposed buyer and at Geisler Farms, we were told the majority of neighbors were in support. In an email response from Mr. Brownell to my opposition letter stated the surrounding neighbors had an overall positive response. I was challenged to find any documentation of the overall positive response from surrounding neighbors. Certainly other letters may have been sent in since this time. Multiple neighbors I have spoken with have stated that they are opposing by not signing the letter of support or choose to remain anonymous. The Polk County Zoning Commission recommended to deny the amendment to the Comprehensive Plan and zoning map in November of 2022. We need to preserve the agricultural industry and contain the urban sprawl and remain environmentally healthy. I'll close with a quote from Zippy DeValle, serving as president of the American Foreign Bureau Federation. We need to take back the concept of sustainability because nobody is working harder to be sustainable than the American farmer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Supervisors. Bill Ludwig, architect and urban planner, 939 Office Park Road in West Des Moines. I'm going to file with you today 16 additional consents for rezoning to adjoining property owners. As we started the development process, the staff had asked us to have neighborhood meetings. So we had had three neighborhood meetings prior to the planning commission meeting, and those were all very positive meetings. After the planning commission meeting, we had an additional two meetings also with surrounding property owners. At the time, we had seen no opposition. I understand there is now at this point one person, but overwhelmingly the neighbors have adopted this project. And I guess the way they phrased it was they liked the idea of being able to kind of select their neighbors, if you will. We've worked hard to, we have basically a situation where we've got existing structures and we're trying to incorporate that into the plan. We aren't taking any production crop land out of production at all. It's roughly 21 acres and it'll be the existing structures plus an additional structure for ministry offices and that. So I think it really is the idea of sustainability, if you will. The existing structures are there. We're simply enhancing those adaptive reuse, if you will, which is something we do almost in every project we try to do. I won't go into detail. The Geislers are here. If you had any questions for them, I think they're appreciative with both staff and yourselves as we've gone through this process. Also, members of the family leader are here to speak if you have any questions from them. We think that we've basically looked at the existing conditions and said, this is probably the most appropriate recognition, I guess, of the family farm so that when they have people coming from around the state and around the country, frankly, they'll look at this and say, this is an Iowa farm and we're in the middle of field of corn and so on. So we think it's very appropriate. The other thing we would file with you today, we've got a couple of lists, some of them, some of the uses that are allowed by the zone, things that we don't necessarily want, restaurant, gasoline station, and so on. The second one, so it'd be an option of either one of these two, basically says, here's what we are going to do on the property and this is what you're asking you to rezonate for. But under any circumstances, either one of these options, we need the zoning that has been required by staff to implement this project. So I'll file these two as well. So do you have any questions from me or from the Geislers or family leader or any other questions?
Bill, are those what you just submitted? Are those conditions you're placing on the property?
Yes. We would limit it either to take out uses that are allowed or simply state the uses that are going to be used in the zone. So you'd have an option of either one of those.
And those conditions would follow the land?
Yes.
Subsequent owners and so forth, I mean.
Yes, exactly.
Right.
Yep.
If you're done, Bill, I'm going to ask if there's anyone else that want to speak during the public hearing. Sure? Podium, your name and address?
Good morning. My name's Brad Colson. I live at 8592 Northeast 56th Street, Bondurant. I'm exactly one mile south of the proposed property. And I'm within easy walking distance and also within sight of the property. There's nothing obstructing my view from this area. And I just realized that my wife is a much better public speaker than I am. But anyway, the very definition of spot zoning and this leapfrog is exactly what's going on here. And I'm going to refer back to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting notes and minutes from November 28th. And in there, it talks about a centralized and controlled expansion. These cities are supposed to expand from the inside out, and the reason for that is as they expand outward, they bring the infrastructure with them. It says in here that the closest commercial property would be four miles to the west at Interstate 35. This is a huge leapfrog out into the country. It's way outside of any commercial area. There's no other commercial area anywhere close. You don't go out four miles and then build back towards the city. You start in the center and you come out and you bring it out with you as you go with the infrastructure. And this, as my wife said, this is a terrible precedent to set because if you okay it for them, then you're going to have to okay it for the next group that comes along. And there will be another group that comes along. Also, nobody goes out and buys 20 acres of ground and only plans on putting up one building. They're buying 20 acres because they plan on filling up 20 acres. This is going to be a 20-acre campus. It's going to be a 20-acre commercial development. They're only showing you the tip of the iceberg. They want to show you what they think you're going to accept so that they can get this passed, but it's not the end game. They've got more planned. Otherwise, they wouldn't be buying 21 acres of land. This is just the start. And the, that mixed use, as it says in here, is for convenience, commercial, office, commercial, retail, heavy retail, restaurants, commercial lodging. I've seen some things where they've talked about maybe a bed and breakfast. Also, they're talking about putting in an amphitheater, which is only going to create noise, which is not suppressed by anything. As I said, I can see their property from mine. And it's just not compatible with the neighborhood. And the, Chapter 3 in the Land Use Goals talks about protecting large contiguous areas of prime farmland, continuing to foster land strategies and regulations that conserve the productivity of available land. And when they say that they're not going to take any land out of production, well, it may not have been corn and soybeans this year or last year, even in the last 10 years, but certainly it's flat agricultural land. It's not a gully. It's not a flood plain. It's not a rocky area. It could certainly be tilled up this spring and planted to crops. So I think that's bending the truth just a little bit on that deal. Chapter 3, Goal 3 of the Land Use is to discourage leapfrog development, reducing urban sprawl. Cities grow in an orderly and condensed manner, preventing unnecessary conversion of natural land to be built in is paramount. To limit unincorporated development within urban fringe areas, to allow for growth only where the utilities and infrastructure can be financially supported and provided. So, and I'm going to refer to the 2050 Comprehensive Use Plan, which was adopted by Polk County just in August of 2022, just four months ago. The Planning and Zoning Commission is talking about how this rezoning and redistricting usage is not compatible with that 2050 plan. I'll finish up by just reading the very recommendation of the planning zoning. The recommendation for denial is based upon the fact that the request is not in harmony with the spirit, intent, goals, and policies of the Polk County 2050 Comprehensive Plan. The recommendation for denial is based on the following. It does not support the public health, safety, and welfare of county residents in that it promotes commercial development incompatible with surrounding land uses and neighborhood character and is furthermore not served by adequate utilities. The rezoning area is not uniquely differentiated from the surrounding properties in terms of location, land use, or circumstances. I would encourage the board to accept the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission, which was a five to one vote to deny this rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else for the public hearing? This gentleman hasn't spoke yet. Bill, let's let him speak. Name and address, please, for the record.
Hi, sir. Ernest George, 316 Aaron Avenue Northwest, Bondurant, Iowa. Chairman, Supervisors. I read the 2050 Comprehensive Plan, or skimmed it, it's big. You recently adopted that. And that, to me, being a resident of Bondurant, I know when our council adopts our comprehensive plan, we try to stick to it and not variate or deviate from that plan because that's a promise that you adopted as policy to follow our growth and make sure we had sustainable growth within the county the right way. I know Ankeny has this in their 2040 plan, which is pretty far away, to go out to this area possibly. Allowing this change from the agricultural to the mixed-use regional zoning district is spot zoning. Other people have spoke about not having the utilities necessary. The family leader is a very large and growing organization, and I don't doubt it's going to continue to grow. However, this facility does not have the water resources to fight adequately a fire should one occur at that facility. You're talking having a possible amphitheater, a bed and breakfast, people from around the nation coming to visit this place, hundreds, possibly thousands of people on property onsite at once, doing large events in commercial structures. Should the worst thing happen, our firefighters do not have the adequate water to fight that fire on an initial tack and save the people appropriately. Okay? The other side of this, what I want to point out is the family leader is a 501(c)(3). Our state keeps cutting and cutting our public funding. Our county has so many nonprofits already that don't pay property taxes. Additionally, more property tax dollars removed also equals cutting more from our local schools. So by allowing another 501(c)(3) to go and change a commercial property or agricultural property, I'm sorry, agricultural property from even paying the lessened agricultural tax is taking more money off of our rolls that we desperately need for our decaying infrastructure. Also, speaking back towards that gentleman's point, cities grow out and they do bring the infrastructure with them, constantly putting in that water sewer, along with the adequate power supplies that get beefed up as you grow out your residential and commercial zones. I would like to urge you to follow the recommendations of the zoning committee and also your professionally trained staff who have gone to school to learn about zoning and planning, these planners who recommended that this be denied. Thank you for your time.
Bill, I'm going to give you one more shot here.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Over the last 15-plus years, this has been a very intensive commercial development that was under conditional use in the county. These existing buildings were used for that purpose. We're simply taking those existing buildings, adding to them, and really, I say, repurposing those. So I think there's no production land coming out of use at all. We are committing ourselves to the architectural drawings and to the planning documents that we've submitted to you. So I don't think you have to worry about additional development going on throughout the whole property. So open further questions if you have them.
Okay. 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 Really, really quickly, go ahead.
I would like to dispute the gentleman's thing. I've driven by that property several times. I think the homeowners could speak to it better than I can, but that was not a heavily used commercial property. They had seasonal activities for a pumpkin patch. Most of the time during the week, it was pretty empty except for some staff once in a while. It did not have hundreds and thousands of people all the time. The only time traffic was even a consideration was during the fall season when they had that pumpkin patch open and people were there. Otherwise, that property was vacant. During the winter, it's dead. There's nobody there. I might be speaking wrongly. The Geislers could correct me, but I didn't see a lot of commercial vehicles and sometimes even the property plowed adequately for group parking. So I would like to dispute that it was not heavily used commercially prior to this.
Okay. Anyone? Bill? Make it quick.
I guess I just, if you want to, I could have the Geislers talk about the hundreds and thousands of people that came for a number of weeks and months during their.
First of all, first of all, and you know, we have, we had a board staff discussion about this. We've had a public meeting about it. We've heard from the owners of the property. We've probably heard from everyone. And candidly, while, you know, I respect, you know, our lesson in planning and how cities should grow, this board is probably well aware of the comprehensive land use processes that we've been through over the last 20 years since I've been here. And I would agree 100% with the issue of infrastructure. As cities grow, it should be adjacent to where infrastructure is in place for fire protection, sanitary sewer. We understand all of those things. This isn't anything that's new to probably anyone on the board, but those are all good points. And I, but if there's no one else for the public hearing, I'm going to close the public hearing so the board can ask questions or deliberate on this matter. Anyone else want to speak during the public hearing? If not, I'll close the hearing. And I don't know if we're ready for a motion to vote on this or whether board members want to talk about this, ask staff some questions. Frankly, I'll just be really brief as far as my position on the matter. I think the spot zoning issue is problematic. I agree with what's being said. What I've said in the past, and I've been more specific about residential developments and the way residential planning has happened in the past in Polk County and unincorporated areas in rural Polk County on ag ground without infrastructure in place. I get extremely concerned with no curb and gutter, no fire protection, no sanitary sewer, and putting more and more septic tanks in the county. I would rather see growth develop based on having infrastructure in place to do that. But once again, and I said this during the board staff discussion that we had on this matter, that when these issues like this come up, generally, we're going to, at least I, I can't speak for the other board members, are going to probably look to the supervisors that represent that area. They're the ones that have been involved in it from the beginning. Supervisor Van Ors had this area in his responsibility, or Bob, both of you had it. You've, Bob has it now. Bob's going to be picking it, he picked it up after the first year. So they have both been involved in the discussions about this rezoning, and I want to hear from them what their thoughts are that I have, they probably have a few questions for staff also. Is Brett here? You're back there, Brett? Okay. Okay. And whoever else you have with you, Brett, to ask questions from. But having said that, Bob, Steve, thoughts?
Yeah, thanks, Tom. First of all, I appreciate the arguments on part of the opposition, the Colsons and Mr. George. Well reasoned and understand those and it makes sense. I have been out to the property, though, took a look at it. As Tom said, I just got this district on January 1st. Up to that point, that was Steve's, and Steve probably has some comments, too. You know, I'm familiar with these kind of problems. We have a lot of unincorporated area here in Polk County and a lot of annexations going on. Some of them make sense, some of them don't. But this is an issue that we deal with a lot. And in this case, I was out to the property, saw it, and they did have a popular seasonal events going on at their pumpkin patch and a corn maze, which did produce a lot of traffic. They had some weddings and receptions and things like that out there, too. So it isn't, it wasn't just a family farm. It was more of a commercial entity and in fact had conditional zoning at that point. This particular rezoning or this particular idea that the Geislers have brought to us doesn't avail itself to conditional zoning, takes a rezoning completely. That's why we're here in the first place. But the development they have seems reasonable to me. They're not taking anything out of production, and I don't know that I could get in the heads of the applicants and say that this is a long-term plot to do anything differently than what they propose. All I know is what's in front of me right now. But they have produced a list of what is, what they would agree to as not permitted and what they would agree to as is permitted, which I think is an element that wasn't there for the Planning and Zoning Commission or the staff at the time that was heard. One of the things I was, I might mention here on the list of not permitted was mentioned as a bed and breakfast, and that is not permitted under their agreements. This is done quite a bit. I was mayor of a city for, before this. Covenants follow property and they follow, you know, the owner, subsequent owners and so forth. So this is not an unusual proposal to put restrictions on future zoning and so forth. But they do have a number of shall and shall not allow, and I don't know if they make sense or not. What I'd propose to do, Tom, is push this off to the staff folks, and we're just doing the first reading today, but have the staff evaluate it. And maybe there's some things that do belong there, maybe there's things that don't belong in there, I don't know. But there's things that shall not be permitted like indoor nursery, commercial apartments, institutional residential group homes, convenience stores, cancelation stations, restaurants, so on. You know, maybe there's more that needs to be on there, maybe there's not. There's some things on the shall be a list that probably are already allowed. I think the opposition brought up some good points because we do have to be cognizant of what's there when a city's doing next. Either Bondurant or Ankeny will probably annex that area in the next X years. And so we want to be cognizant of what's out there and the infrastructure they need to bring with them. But I think in this case, the rezoning makes some sense. I'll be supporting it, but I'll present these to the staff. Mr. Ludwig presented these just to the clerk already. Staff can look those over, but I would go ahead and move the resolution at this point.
Steve, do you have any comments?
I do. Thank you. And I certainly appreciate all of you coming and speaking and sharing your thoughts. This is a very, very, very unique situation when it comes to a rezoning from agriculture to a, to an M. Which M is it?
U.
MU. A lot of things we have to consider. If we change this from ag to a mixed use, is this setting a precedent? It's always been a question of mine. I, like Supervisor Brownell, was mayor of Ankeny for a number of years on the city council in Ankeny before that. The comprehensive plan that we've just gone through, it's my fifth comprehensive plan that I have been instrumental in putting together. Feel like I have a little bit of background in what a comprehensive plan is and what it does and what it shall be. And one thing that a comprehensive plan, and some of the supervisors will laugh at this a little bit, but it's not made to be cast in stone. There has to be, has to be some fluidity to it. And fluidity doesn't mean, okay, here's a great opportunity for us, let's just make some modifications and go. So number one for me is, will this set a precedent by doing this? I don't believe it will because of the conditions that have been submitted. And I too saw them. Mr. Ludwig gave me a copy of them yesterday, and I've been able to go through them. And I think that, as Supervisor Brownell suggested, that there is three readings. This is going to be over the course of the next six weeks until we do the third reading or if we don't approve it in the second reading, then it's dead. But I think, I think we owe it to everyone to look at those conditions, and they will be public so everybody can take a look at them and really make the conditions. be public so everybody can take a look at them and really make the conditions very, very tight for what the use can be and what the use can be into the future. And if somebody else, if another organization, if another company comes and said, well, you did it for them, do it for us, we'll say, well, we did it for them, and these were the conditions that we placed on it, and very limited. The one unique thing about this is that it's existing. It is around twenty acres that have not been in agricultural use over the last, how many years have you been in, had the farm or had the?
Seventeen years.
For the past seventeen years. The two structures are very, very nice structures. You've said you live near them and drive by them. These structures were built and permitted by the county, and the septics can handle the four hundred people, that their big meeting space where they've had weddings and had a number of different activities and the pumpkin and with the corn maze. The septic can handle that. It's been permitted. The same with the barn that they have reconditioned. So the existing buildings meet the criteria of permitting for septic. You bring up a valid point with, with, does it, do we have the fire pressure for the fire protection? That has to be a, we'll look at that. That has to be a condition, too. But what can it be, what could it be used for if it wasn't being used for this? If family leader builds another building, it has to meet the same permitting criteria. It's not going to get septic unless it meets the criteria. So once again, just because we rezoned this to do this use, they still have a lot of hoops to go through to build a building, to build an amphitheater. There's going to have to be, if paving a parking lot, there's going to have to be some type of water retention on that twenty acres of property. So this is, this is not the first hoop. This is giving them recognition to be able to do this. I go back to a question. What can this be used for if not for this? Somebody else was, is, the Geislers want to retire, and here's an opportunity for them to find a use for this property that is in existence. I think I've reached my five-minute limit, sir.
Anything else, board members?
I can support it, by the way.
Are you seconding it, Steve?
Resolution on the town floor right now.
Bobby moved it.
Bobby moved it.
I'll second it.
I have a question for Ralph. On the nonprofit status?
Yes.
So they're not paying any property taxes on this property?
If that's their current status, that would be correct.
Could we put a condition on as a pilot?
I don't think so. A pilot?
Or are they?
Payment in lieu of taxes.
Payment in lieu of taxes.
Oh.
No.
I'd have to do some research on that. I'll get back to you.
Brett, could you come up to the podium for just a second? I just got a couple of questions. So a couple of the board members have mentioned that there were some conditions that have been brought in that haven't been added to anything that we have yet that I think seem acceptable to some of the board members. So from a technical standpoint, if this was passed today, before the second, before we even go to the second reading, we would want to know what those conditions were. And I know your staff have already recommended denial. I get that part of it, so bear with me. But anything else that if it appears it's going to get through a third reading that we could do for restrictions? And I think the biggest concern, I think, has always been for me, is what happens if the family leader leaves, the current applicant leaves? What could happen on that ground afterwards? That does carry over to the next person that would buy that property, right? Whatever those conditions are?
That's correct. So if you direct us to, we would work with the applicant to put those conditions into an agreement that would get, that would accompany the ordinance and carry through. We've done, we've done a number of them in the past.
And if this is a positive vote, I would ask that the restrictions that are being considered before the second reading, anyone that wants them, wants to see them, it should be a public document that we can facilitate getting those to the folks that are opposed to this rezoning so at least they know what restrictions might be added should this pass. My next question is about capacity for the septic system, and that's always a concern for me and how it impacts water quality and all the septics that we already have in unincorporated Polk County, which is too many. But so is the current system up to where it should be as far as being able to handle what they're proposing?
So the current system would have been permitted with the current facilities. It would have to be reviewed as part of the site development, and then with the new building getting added, likely additional, excuse me, additional review from a soil engineer and an additional septic system would be required.
And I assume there's probably plans where if there's a gravel lot or you're going to pave those lots, Bill? So what about runoff?
Yeah, so there would be site improvement requirements and then stormwater, they have to meet the stormwater requirements of our ordinance.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions for?
Just comment, Tom. Brett and I talked this morning about this a bit, and there, as I said, there may be some things on the shall and shall not list that Brett wants to add or not, and so those things are, I mean, you need to look through it and take a look and see what you see. And if there's some things that make sense that should be on the shall not list, then we want to know those. There's things on the shall list that may already be allowed, like picnic area garden, that kind of stuff is probably already allowed there now. So I think some of the shall pieces is already allowed. We just need to know, they don't need to be part of this, I guess.
Yeah.
But if you find something that makes some sense, Angela's brought up one already, then maybe that's, these are the kind of things that we expect to kind of hear back from you about, okay?
Absolutely. I think it would be our, if this is to move forward, it'd be staff's recommendation to put conditions of those uses that are allowed and just put that box around, hey, these six, ten, whatever uses, these are what is allowed on this property under this zoning, and the not allowed is automatically, if it's not one of those allowed uses. To make it, to make it clear moving forward in the future.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions for Brett? All right. There's been a motion and a second on the public hearing for the zoning map amendment. Roll call.
McCoy?
Yes.
Brownell?
Yes.
Conley?
I'm passing until I see the conditions.
Van Orte?
Yes.
Hawkins Smith?
Yes. Okay. So the next option, the next item is the first reading. Remember, this is the first reading. There's got to be two more readings that come before this board, and we expect to be able to see, and anyone that is concerned about this rezoning, able to see what restrictions are going to be put on this parcel. So I need a motion for the first reading.
So moved.
Second. Roll call.
McCoy?
Yes.
Brownell?
Yes.
Conley?
Pass.
Van Orte?
Yes.
Hawkins Smith?
Yes. Okay. Thanks, everybody. Discussion. Let's move on to item number seven, public comments. Anyone here to address the board on any other matters here this morning?
Keisha.
Keisha.
Hello. Keisha Fields, diversity specialist here at Polk County. I'm just prefacing the MLK proclamation, thanking the board for acknowledging MLK. Also thanking to Rudy, Tiffany, Gail, Gail, West Des Moines Human Rights Commission and West Des Moines Historic Society here to accept the proclamation. There's a lot of events, we already have them featured on the TV, that is for MLK, encouraging people to come out, do National Day of Service, enjoy the many events that are happening here on the weekend of as well as on MLK Day. And some of our Polk County employees will be participating on the National Day of Service. If any other Polk County employees are interested in doing meals of the heartland, our group name is Polk County Iowa Government, so encouraging people to just come out and celebrate MLK.
Thank you so much. Can we get down in front and get a picture with the proclamation, with the group you have with you, Keisha? And Sarah, can you get that photo for us?
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Okay. Let's see where we're at here. We're at permits, item number eight, Becky?
Number eight, renewal application for Class C retail alcohol license and Sunday sales permit for Capirelli's 4,500 Northwest Sixth Drive.
Roll call.
McCoy?
Yes.
Brownell?
Yes.
Conley?
Yes.
Van Orte?
Yes.
Hawkins Smith?
Yes. Number nine?
Petitions, number nine, petition to suspend taxes and special assessments, 1350 East Ninth Street.
Roll call.
McCoy?
Yes.
Brownell?
Yes.
Conley?
Yes.
Van Orte?
Yes.
Hawkins Smith?
Yes. Number nine?
Petitions, number nine, petition to suspend taxes and special assessments, 1350 East Ninth Street.
Roll call.
McCoy?
Yes.
Brownell?
Yes.
Conley?
Yes.
Van Orte?
Yes.
Hawkins Smith?
Yes. Okay, and move on to resolutions.
Number 10, resolution authorizing the auditor's office to publish notice of public hearing for January 24th on disposal of county interest in real estate. Number 11, resolution concerning construction evaluation of confinement feeding facilities in Polk County. Twelve and thirteen are resolutions approving weatherization contracts with Iowa Department of Human Rights. Fourteen and fifteen are resolutions approving final plaques of Christian Juan Estates, Plat Three, and Maxwell Estates, Plat One.
I'll move those collectively.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
McCoy?
Yes.
Brownell?
Yes.
Conley?
Yes.
Van Orte?
Yes.
Hawkins Smith?
Yes.
Number 16, resolution approving provider and business associate agreement with Thriving Families Counseling Services for clinical consultation at Juvenile Detention Center.
Move.
Second.
Roll call.
McCoy?
Yes.
Brownell?
Yes.
Conley?
Yes.
Van Orte?
Yes.
Hawkins Smith?
Yes.
Number 17, resolution approving January 2023 manufactured home abatement.
Move it.
Second.
Roll call.
McCoy?
Yes.
Brownell?
Yes.
Conley?
Yes.
Van Orte?
Yes.
Hawkins Smith?
Yes.
Number 18, resolution approving recommendations of Polk County Assessor for disallowances of homestead tax credits.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Roll call.
McCoy?
Yes.
Brownell?
Yes.
Conley?
Yes.
Van Orte?
Yes.
Hawkins Smith?
Yes.
Number 19, resolution creating side-by-side position in Public Works Department. Number 20, resolution reclassifying position within the sheriff's office.
Move. Second. Discussion? Roll call.
McCoy?
Yes.
Brownell?
Yes.
Conley?
Yes.
Van Orte?
Yes.
Hawkins Smith?
Yes.
Number 21, resolution approving emergency capital funding for freight elevator repairs at Hy-Vee Hall. Number 22, resolution approving easement with Verizon Wireless to install underground fiber under the near north parking lot at Community Choice Convention Center.
Move.
Second. Discussion? Roll call.
McCoy?
Yes.
Brownell?
Yes.
Conley?
Yes.
Van Orte?
Yes.
Hawkins Smith?
Yes.
Twenty-three and 24, resolutions authorizing settlements of civil litigation claims.
Move those resolutions.
Second.
Roll call.
McCoy?
Yes.
Brownell?
Yes.
Conley?
Yes.
Van Orte?
Yes.
Hawkins Smith?
Yes.
Number 25, resolution approving community development grant for Carrying Hands Outreach Center.
Move. Second. Roll call.
McCoy?
Yes.
Brownell?
Yes.
Conley?
Yes.
Van Orte?
Yes.
Hawkins Smith?
Yes.
Number 26, resolution approving community development grant for Ingersoll Grand Self-Supporting Municipal Improvement District.
Move. Second. Roll call.
McCoy?
Yes.
Brownell?
Yes.
Conley?
Yes.
Van Orte?
Yes.
Hawkins Smith?
Yes. Reports?
Twenty-seven, Polk County Veteran Affairs Second Quarter Report, fiscal year 2223.
Receiving file, communications?
Number 28, City Development Board Meeting Notice for City of Bondurant Voluntary Annexation, Including Non-Consenting Owners Within Urbanized Area of Altoona and Mitchellville. Number 29, City of Grimes Meeting Notice Concerning Proposed 80/20 Voluntary Annexation Within Urbanized Area of Johnston and Urbandale. Number 30, City of Granger Meeting Notice Concerning 100% Voluntary Annexation to the City of Granger.
For Public Works and the county attorney. Any budget actions?
None.
Okay, memorandum of appointments.
I'll move the appointment list.
Second. Roll call.
McCoy?
Yes.
Brownell?
Yes.
Conley?
Yes.
Van Orte?
Yes.
Hawkins Smith?
Yes.